This meeting of the Gaston City Council now come to order and the chair calls on Assistant City Clerk Judy Shavers for the roll call.
Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is now open for business. Councilman Derrick Williams will bring our invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together today, Father. We thank you for the opportunity, Father, to come and govern, Father, in a Godly manner. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon the city and right now we ask, Father, that you will continue to grow and prosper and bless the city, touch the minds and the hearts of those who are in decision-making capacities, Father God, and continue to prosper us going forward. Protect us, keep us, and grow us, Father, for it's in Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody, please make sure your cell phones are either turned off or in a vibrate position. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting on September the 20th.
Sommo.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of September the 16th and the 22nd.
Sommo.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve.
Proclamation, Mayor. Unfinished business. These three ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. A is an ordinance requiring deposit fee for certain garbage collection customers. This requires new customers, current customers with a late payment history, a new customer named on an account, and previous customers without garbage collection services at their time in their name in the prior six months to pay a deposit fee equal to twice the quarterly fee. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to pass.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Is there any discussion on it? Take the vote.
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Stay.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
B is an ordinance further regulating exemptions from unpaid, from residential garbage collection fees. This requires persons owing unpaid balance on a current or prior account to pay in full or make arrangements to pay before being granted an exemption. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is an attempt to get a handle on our garbage fee collections. It's been, at one point, with about a million dollars out there that's, it's a really sticky situation where, you know, what do you do? You take the can away and what do they do with the garbage? So it's, it's not a, it's not a very simple problem to solve, but this is an attempt to improve it, so we'll see how it goes. If it's running into too much trouble down the road, we'll change it.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Stay.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
C is an ordinance prohibiting certain trucks on portions of Brook Avenue. Trucks having more than four axles will not be permitted to drive on Brook Avenue, commonly called pumps, Pump Station Road between Walnut Street and Centurion Way. What's the pleasure of the council?
Most will approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, we've had a bunch of transfer trucks and big trucks coming down these roads during school hours and afternoons, early in the mornings, getting stuck, people's yards and in ditches and keeping people awake 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. So that's just not really deemed a truck route through there. And so when this passes, the police will be able to start writing tickets on these trucks. And that is from Walnut Street to Centurion Way.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Nine is a resolution reappointing members to the Electrical Affairs Committee. This reappoints Jim, Jimmy Reed Jr. for a term expiring June of 28, 2014, and Tom McElrath and Ray Coleman for terms expiring June of 28, 2015. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sommo.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution authorizing incentives for contributions to United Way. This authorizes the city to provide various incentives for employees to make payroll deductions for contributions to United Way. Drawings will be held for selection of eligible employees to receive the incentives. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sommo.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business?
Mr. President, I have one item. Resolution, approving amendment to rule, to rules and regulations of Forest Cemetery and Alabama City Cemetery to require sealed and lined concrete vaults for all earth interments. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this, this resolution today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Looks to me like we have a prison. You want to tell us what that's all about? We also have two police officers here. They must be watching for something.
You're gonna need more than two.
Oh, wow. What a woman, what a woman.
No, I did want to explain my outfit. I try to dress a little bit nicer when I come in and dress the council, but this week is banned books week, and as I'm sure most of you noticed, I was unfortunately arrested Friday afternoon for reading banned books. And the point of this week is it's an American Library Association to bring awareness to the fact that everybody has the right to read what they want to read and what they deem suitable for themselves and for their families. It's not an opportunity to tell people what they should be reading or to force any type of literature on anybody else, but to say that we all have the right to choose what is appropriate for us and appropriate for our children and to bring to light that some of the things that get banned and some of the ways that literature has been used in the past has been very discriminatory against a lot of different types of people and the different things that get banned. Some of the reasons are just absolutely absurd. I have, Where the Sidewalk Ends is one of my absolute favorite banned and challenged books by Shel Silverstein, a very wonderful group of children's poems. And I just wanted to say thank you to the council and the sheriff's department for being so good and the mayor for being so great about letting me get arrested and letting me drive around in this all week. I mean, I say that now, if I actually get arrested for driving around in this all week, I might not. Thank you for going along with this insane idea. But all of the staff at the library, a lot of them are wearing orange jumpsuits, so if you see orange jumpsuits at the library this week, there's no cause for alarm. We are just celebrating our right and freedom to read. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
That's a good thing.
Citizens request Alfred Williams, police not performing their job. Please let me to your remarks for five minutes.
Would you do me the kindness to let me know when my five minutes is up?
I'll be glad to, thank you.
All right. For the record, again, I'm Al Williams, 932 Fourth Avenue. Little, Wallace is a little horse. I've been doing a lot of visiting. I'd like to commend the person that just came before me. I've heard a lot, you know, said about her, you know, at the Gaston Public Library, and so I see that at least there's one creative person that's working with, you know, city government. Unfortunately, I was not given the privilege to wear orange uniform at the Edward County Jail on September the 17th, when I was falsely arrested by the Gaston Police Department. Only reason why I wanted to come before the council on the 13th was to apologize to my family for any false images that may have been created by my appearing on the council agenda on 9/6/11 to speak in behalf of a raise, a dollar raise for the trolley drivers. After that, I got some comments, people gonna think you crazy, you know, leave those people at city all alone, stay in your place, and so on and so on. So I asked through the council pro temp, most of the council pro temp, to let me come before the council on, well, September 13th, which was a week following the week that I was on the council agenda. Whoever made the decision, they did not allow me the privilege to come and tell my family that I love them, that I may have created the impression that they were not there for me. My family, in the two years that I have been without an automobile, has been there for me. My ex-wife have driven me anywhere I wanted, you know, to go in the city. Mostly, I ridden the trolley because I didn't want to be a bother to my, you know, family. The city get most of the government, money for the trolley from the federal government. Am I near my five minutes?
No, but you need to stick to your subject today, not what you did last week.
Well, all right. Back to the Gaston Police Department. I was falsely arrested. I can't call the officer name, right?
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yes, you don't call names.
All right. Can't call the officer name. At a local hospital, I went to the hospital to seek medical assistance. I was arrested at this medical facility. I was not drunk, as some people have, you know, alluded. I did not resist the officer's arrest. He told me, you arrested. I got in his car. He handcuffed me, took me to the Edward County Jail. My business in being here is to say that the officer did not follow any procedure. From what I know, every one of the, well, not all of them, most of Gaston City Police vehicles supposed to have a camera in them. I asked the officer, what, you know, where was the camera, so that he could record what was going on, so it wouldn't be said that, you know, something happened that didn't happen. Officer said, this vehicle does not have a camera, and, you know, I don't really care that it doesn't have a camera. He was a young, thirty-some-year-old, rash, young man. I'm 62 years old, and I've been, I've never been arrested in the city, never been near no jail, with the exception of the time that I protested Collis Madden being killed and other incidents. Yes, I'm a civil rights activist, and I'm proud of it. I've been at City Hall to knock on the mails, though, with Hosea Williams. So the officer, like I say, not really having no kind of knowledge of what my constitutional rights were, that I had the right to be, first, be told, you know, what, you know, what my rights are according to the Miranda Law. Nobody told me nothing about what my rights were. Got to the county jail, was denied the privilege to call a person I wanted to call, that you can't call him. Is my five minutes up?
No, no, no.
Just keep talking, she'll let you go.
Thirty seconds.
Huh?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, all right. So to my family, I want to say, I love you. I've made efforts to rekindle our relationship with you. I've called most of you, if not all of you. I said last week that I was going to divorce my family. I retract that. I know it was not a good thing to do, but I was just trying to protect my family.
Thank you, Alfred.
Mr. President, can I comment there just one second, please?
Sure.
I appreciate the gentleman coming up here, talking to the Gaston City Council. I appreciate everything he had to say to us today, but this is the Gaston City Council. We're not the Gaston Civil Service Board. The Gaston Civil Service Board meets September 11th at 5:30, so you might want to speak with them, because we have no control over any of that. And all those, Civil Service Board, they're appointed by the governor. Just thought I'd let you know, so you would know.
Okay. Okay. Your remarks by the mayor and the council, you want to start?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. Since I'm already talking, I might as well go ahead.
You mean you finished?
Yeah, so I can go ahead and finish. I do appreciate everybody here. I see my friend Ricky Hunter, he's sitting in the back today, and I appreciate him coming today. He's one of my best friends, and I appreciate him coming. Also, to remind everybody, October 15th, from 6:00 to 10:00, we're gonna have music on Meegen. It'll be at the Alabama City Gazette, there's two or four groups will be there playing. We've already lined up October the 27th for the Halloween giveaway on Wall Street. It'll be from 5:00 to 7:30. It should be bigger and better this year than it has been before. Also, too, I know this is getting all confused, October the 11th at 6:00, we'll have a district meeting for people in South Gaston. It'll start at 6:00. That's all I got.
Ben.
It's at Banks Park Activities Center. I'm sorry.
Ben.
Sure. This morning at 8:30, I had the privilege of going by Ray Thompson School up in North Gaston. It's in Derrick Williams. I'm gonna let Derrick elaborate on this, but I did want to say that I'm, I'm a big proponent of reading and comprehension. And Derrick, that school, I was impressed. Number one, with teachers, but when you get in those classrooms with those kids with those iPads, first, first thing I thought of, Johnny, was what in the world, they got an iPad, they don't even know how to read a book or nothing. Then they came out with a book, overcame that objection. Then they said they hadn't got a pencil. They don't need a pencil. On that iPad, they just add, subtract, they did everything in the world with their finger all the way through, you know? But the intensity in the classrooms, Billy, were unreal. Those kids, when I was in school, I was over there trying to tear the end of the roll up or something, you know? They don't do that. They got that iPad, man, and they down on it, and they doing work, and they learning. It's amazing. Anyway, I was really impressed with the school, with the teachers, and with the students, and what they're learning and how they're learning. And I hope you elaborate on it, Derrick. Really good. That's all I have.
Ben.
I would like to, we've talked a lot about Civil Service Board, and I'd like to just bring up a little something that you might not know about it. When that law was passed, it affected three cities, Tuscaloosa, Anniston, and Gaston. Since then, Tuscaloosa and Anniston have had the wisdom to make some changes in it. In Anniston, they have a city manager who hires, fires police chiefs and police officers. In Tuscaloosa, that's the mayor's responsibility. Those two cities have changed their civil service law to, and we're, we're the only city in Alabama now that has the civil service law that we have. The only one. And, you know, this, so I could call on you citizens of Gaston, if you're not happy with the service you're getting from the police department, you talk to your legislatures. They're the only ones that can change it, and they don't seem to be wanting to change it. But, so if you're not happy, talk to your legislatures, get them to tweak that law a little bit, so we can have a little better cooperation between the police and fire department, and the police and the mayor, really. The civil service law that we have now is, is a recipe for conflict, and it's always been that way. The mayor and the chief bump heads, and it's, and it's just, it's not a way for the city to progress and perform and provide the service to the citizens they deserve. It's just a formula for chaos, and it's been that way. We need to change it. That's all I got to say.
Robert.
That's, that's very interesting, because I thought we had a deal where it was going to be changed. As a matter of fact, we almost promised that it was going to be changed. They had the bill drafted and legislation drafted in, in this last session, and I just assumed that it was going to pass, because I had told someone, man, we're gonna, we're gonna finally get this thing right in Gaston. And for whatever reason, it fell apart. I do know the reason, but I guess.
Thank you.
Bob said, we can't call names, so I won't call names. But, you know, it's, it's a sad situation, and I'm glad Bill brought it up, the fact that when we started out, it was three cities had the same similar act, and the people in two of those cities had the wisdom, the sense, and the nerve to change it and put it like it should be. And so hopefully.
Their legislative.
Well, I say, their legislative body did it, and hopefully our legislative body would do the same thing here. I would hope that the Civil Service Board itself would think about that, because we've asked them to hold up on, on any action until such times we can get back with the legislative delegation to see if we can get this changed. And hopefully, cooler heads and cooler minds will prevail, that the Civil Service Board will not go forward with the search for a new police chief at this point in time, that they will wait to see what the legislative body is going to do. I think they go into session early this year, because I think the primaries are moved up early. So it shouldn't be a long period of time after the first of the year that the legislature will go into session, and we should know within a few days as to whether or not that act will be changed. And so I would beg, I'm begging now, I don't normally beg anybody, but I'm begging the Civil Service Board, which I know they ain't gonna do, but I'd like the folks sometime to make me out of a liar, but I doubt that very seriously, too. But I'm begging them to hold off on any action as far as doing the police chief search until such times we see what the legislative delegation is gonna do. And again, gentlemen, I know all, all eight of us, I started to say all seven of us, but the seven council members passed a resolution, and all eight of us signed it, asking them to change that act. So let's just see what happens. Maybe the Civil Service Board will, will listen. I doubt it, but that's my two cent worth, anyway.
Derrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I, I'd like to, to share with people is this, you can, you can generally count on Mr. Eccles to, to exude wisdom, on Tuesdays, anyway. And, and one thing that, one thing that I, I agree with him wholeheartedly on is that the, the big thing that differentiates Gaston from those other two cities that were mentioned is that those cities had the support of their local legislative delegation to, to get those changes implemented, to make their arrangement more meaningful. To date, we, we just haven't had that, and, and I, I truly hope that, that will happen soon. And I think the important thing to note, as, as it relates to this council, is that I don't think any of the council members here are interested in seeing the Civil Service Act unravel at any level. But the, the chief, the, the police chief and the fire chief should not be covered under that Civil Service Act. We really feel like they should be handled just like other department heads at City Hall. You know, something else to note, and again, I've said this before, you know, you, you have to look no further than the last two hires and how expensive they were for the city. Why do you want to, you know, you, you, it begs the question, why is the Civil Service Board in such a hurry to, to hire a police chief, knowing the history that we've had in making bad hire decisions and knowing how expensive it is to try to undo those decisions? I can tell you that this city is gonna do what we're legally required to do, so there, you know, I don't think there's any, 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 any debate about that. But it really, it really concerns me when the motives become very political, and I think we have to be careful about that. I think we have to be careful that we don't make a decision that's, that's politically expedient and doesn't, doesn't benefit the city as a whole. Couple other things, again, I do want to comment on what, do want to comment on what Councilman Reed mentioned. We, we did actually go and attend the open house at Thompson Elementary, and, and I'm always excited and proud of the fact that, that I have three schools in my district, and Thompson Elementary being one of them, and Thompson's the benefactor of a pilot program where iPads are being used in every, for every student in the fourth and fifth grade. There was a, you know, very good article in the Times on, on yesterday, and one of the things that got highlighted by one of the teachers and administrators there is the ability for them to differentiate instruction. And, and what that means simply is this, if you've got children at different levels of learning, that iPad, iPad really gives you the opportunity to, to, to not highlight so much the kid that's, that's, that's struggling and not cheat the child that's excelling. It gives them the opportunity to continue to progress at their respective levels, and it makes the teacher's job more of a job of facilitating instruction as opposed to, as opposed to driving instruction. So, so again, you know, there've been some, some stories on CNN and on the, on the, on the national news that are critical of iPads, and, and I can tell you that this morning, I did not see any of that. I saw those children excelling. One of the things that I've asked for is that objectively, we look at it a year from now to see, you know, what the test scores are and, and what some of the other things, the objective items are relative to what we were before the iPads versus where we are afterwards. But I think it's a good pilot, pilot program, and I think it's something that we, we should look at expanding at some level, because again, it really creates a good learning situation for our children. And it also helps us to bridge the technology gap that exists in some of our poor communities. That's something that we tend to miss when we start talking about the cost of, of this technology. So again, they, they could have taken on a very, a much more expensive route with, with the very expensive $2,000 Macintosh laptop computers, but, but they chose to take on the, you know, six to $800 a piece iPad, and the children love them. The children love them. We watched these children excel this morning, and again, you know, Ben and I both kind of got nostalgic, and we almost teared up, because it's just good to see children take an interest in education. So I could go on all day about that, but, but again, let's, you know, where you can and where possible, let's make sure we're supporting that kind of effort. Couple other quick announcements, there's the 411 yard sales begins tomorrow, September 28th, and it'll last through Saturday, October the 1st, so please go out and support that. It's always a big event. And lastly, I have my district meeting for District Two. It's gonna be at Thompson Community Center on Thursday at 6:30. So again, September 29th, Thursday, 6:30, the District Two meeting will be held. Thank you.
Billy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The pilot program at Thompson, on iPads to be in the hands of every fourth and fifth grade student, is a very good program. We have very good information concerning the fact that there are plans to roll that program out to every elementary school in the city, in the city school system. So it will be rolled out, because there's just nothing positive things about that program. The Gaston City School System is in the process of making plans to roll that out to all the elementary
to all the elementary schools. So every kid in the fourth and fifth grade in the city of Gadsden will have the opportunity to work with the iPad. I'd like to thank Public Works again for the signage that we've gotten placed on Payden Ridge and Payden Road. Dominant signing saying that trucks are not prohibited and it'll be strictly enforced. There's no way that a tractor-trailer can turn onto Payden Road without seeing that sign, nor come up George Wallace Drive and go onto Payden Ridge without seeing a very dominant sign saying that they are not supposed to be on those streets in the community. So I thank Public Works for that. We should see a drastic reduction, if not a complete cessation, of all tractor-trailers on those two streets, tearing up our streets. The mayor's going to talk extensively, I hope, about the civil service situation. I just have a problem. I have something that just, in the back of my mind, that can't justify why a program is good for two, three, or four, or five cities in the whole state of Alabama that's not even in any other city in the state. I have a problem with understanding why it's so good that we want to keep it. It just, it doesn't compute with my little small brain. And we must have, the city, the people in the city of Gadsden are the ones that must have control over the things that happen in that city. And not a bunch of people who are appointed by the governor, and some of which don't even stay in the city limits of Gadsden. So that's, I have a problem with that. But we're going to get through it. We're going to work through it. We're going to get questions answered. Those persons who have questions about the validity of a mayor-council program, you know, where they're in charge, or just the mayor, those questions can be answered, but we need a forum in which to do it. We don't need one group going to these people and then saying this, another group going saying this, and another group going... We need to get all of our legislative delegates together and answer these questions and let them see what advantages that could be in making a change. The city council meeting is recorded. It's on G I T N. And it's recorded and plays repeatedly from one week to the other. I want to encourage the citizens to, if you're not here for this meeting, to tune in to one of those broadcasts, so that you can be informed of some of the things that are going on in city council. I know I've seen instances just recently where major issues that have been brought up before the council here, that some of our constituents and some of our residents were not aware of it. So I just encourage you to pay attention or to at least watch one of those during the week, a whole week. It comes on about three times a day. So be looking for that. And... That's it? Thank you. Oh, no, no, it's not. I'm sorry. No, it is not. I knew there was one more. The Sycamore Cell Foundation is having their Sycamore Cell Walk-a-thon on October the eighth. There's been a lot of talk about it. We will have the support of the city completely and totally. We have gotten that commitment, and for the past three months, four months, five months since they've been planning this Walk-a-thon, the city has cooperated immensely with the people who are planning this Walk-a-thon. We have with us today, here with us in our audience, Ms. Fay Edwards, who is one of the coordinators of this walk. And I'd like to thank her for being here and say that if you have questions about the Walk-a-thon after this meeting, she'll be glad to answer those questions for you. But we look forward to this event. It's going to encompass all of Calhoun County, Blount County, Cherokee, Clay, Clayburn, Coburn, Edgewood, Jefferson, Randolph, St. Clair, Shelby, Talleyrand, and Walker. Those are all the counties that are in this area that are supporting the Sycamore Cell Walk-a-thon. I also would like to also tell you that we have, the Sycamore Cell Foundation has an office at the J.W. Stewart Building on Springfield Avenue, so that you can contact them if you need to have, get information, or if you need to talk to someone about Sycamore Cell, anything about Sycamore Cell. And we have a number that you can get for that building here after this meeting. And I'm going to ask Ms. Fayne if you would request it be on the agenda next Tuesday for council meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have something I overlooked when I was speaking. I would like to announce that I'm going to have a district meeting next, I guess, next Tuesday, which will be October the fourth. It'll be October the fourth. We're going to meet at the Arthur Green Room. A group of people from around Gadsden Middle School is driving this particular meeting, but everybody in the district is certainly welcome. So that's October the fourth, six o'clock, Arthur Green Room, where we'll have a District Five meeting. So I encourage everybody in the district to come out. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the mayor a question before he speaks. I've had one person who tells me that we ought to leave the police chief under the Civil Service Board, because if we change it, it will be nothing but a political thing, and that every time we change mayors, we'll change police chief and fire chief. I want to ask the mayor, when he came in, how many directors did you fire and put your people in?
None.
It's just not that easy to do. You have to have a reason to fire somebody. You can't just fire somebody and put them in. There has to be a reason. So I just wanted to put that out, so that everybody...
Okay, that...
Let me remind everybody, we had a mayor come in one time and dismissed one of the department heads. Probably, he didn't have just cause to do it. And when it wound up, it cost the city about $150,000 when it was all over. So you don't just dismiss somebody because you want to. You better have just cause.
That's right. And you, you know, I deal with them, just practically all of them, on a daily basis. There's about fifteen. You know, some of them were for me, I guess, some of them were, I don't care about all that. I'm in here to do a job, what the people sent me up here to do. And it's to be fair, honest, open, and accountable, especially financially. And that's what we do, and I get along with all of them. But if I have a problem, if I have a problem in their department, I can tell one of them sort of what's going on, and they take care of it or get back with me and keep me posted. It's not an unknown factor when I try to find out what's happening. But anyway, I want to first ask y'all a question. Did anybody get up here, get a call from the Gadsden Times about all the comments were made in the paper yesterday? If there's any kind of, our view on any of that?
Nope.
I didn't either. It really disappoints me that, because I didn't read anything that was truthful. It really disappoints me that The Times doesn't, you know, call and verify things before they just put in hearsay and somebody who has an agenda's comments. That really bothers me, but I'm not going to get into all that. That's fine. What I do want to say is, it's the process of the Civil Service Board. You know, it's controlled, and people talk about politics. It's controlled by political activists and special interest groups in other municipalities and in the county, and one or two in the city of Gadsden. And I'm not talking about the Civil Service Board. I'm talking about the way that we get appointees on there. And it's appointed by the governor. The former governor appointed, I think, four of the five people that's on there now, without any input from us, the mayor's office, the city council, or anybody. I don't know how you could get more political than that. I think some people would go along with anything if, as long as it was their special interest group, if it was Godzilla they was trying to put in there. But also, the, you know, let me tell you what happens. Say I wanted to get rid of the chief, take him to the Civil Service Board. Well, you're going to be around at least a minimum of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Then it's going to be appealed to Circuit Court. It's another couple hundred thousand. And it could be more, depending on how many delays and how many postponements. And it could go on for two or three years. We don't need all that kind of stuff, and we certainly don't need to spend that much money on an issue like that. When all the other directors, you know, if we have just cause, we call them in, we talk to the attorney. But I haven't done any of that. I've been here all, going on, about to start my sixth, I guess, fifth? Twenty-fifth or something? Year. But, you know, it's a lot of money. It's the most important part, I guess you would say, that along with finance, public safety is. And it's forty percent of our budget. It's several million dollars. You know, and if you don't really have any input about a lot of things that go on down there or need to know, because most of the calls come to my office. And if anybody tries to see the chief, anybody, and this relates a little bit to what was said yesterday. Anybody, and you can ask anybody that works in my office, ninety-nine percent of the people who come to see me, if I'm not busy, I bring them in and talk to them and see what they want and try to handle the problem or send it to the right department. And, you know, if you get somebody who wants to con the system, stay in here, do what they want to, not be cooperative, and then they know that if you take them, they're going to sue, and it's going to wind up in court after the Civil Service Board, and they're probably going to get some kind of settlement, because your insurance starts wanting to settle when the number gets so high. And that ain't what we need to happen with our money. We don't need it. And as long as I'm here, I'm going to try not to have it. Also, another issue is, you know, it's, a lot of it's about greed. You ask about greed. It's about greed. I've been, this is my fifth out of six, let's see, fifth budget out of six years. And when I got in here, we had very little money, and everybody knows all that, less than a month's operating expenses. And we started changing a lot of things. Our employment, our retirement, the police and fire was 1.9%. And they can say, well, I'm blaming, I'm not blaming them. It's just the way things happened before I got here. Well, and that was in '03. It was 1.9%. The city paid out of everybody's check towards the retirement system for their retirement. When I got in office, it was a little over 26%. You name one place in the state of Alabama that you can go and get paid 26% of your weekly salary, that your employer will pay it into your retirement system. I would like to go and try to get a job there, if that's the case. After all this is done, we were the highest in the state. We're still going to be second highest in the state. We're going to be around, somewhere around 20%, 18% or something. The counties is 6%. And I showed you a list. We had it printed out of everybody. We were way up the top. But anyway, we've also given raises. We've given raises, five out of six budgets that we've done. We've absorbed insurance since 1991. There was a resolution passed along with employees, but it's never been done but one time, and that was the second year I was in office. A family in the city of Gadsden who has our insurance pays $1,553 a year for insurance. The bug man told me he paid $100 a week that sprayed my house the other day. You know, and I'm glad we got good benefits. I don't have nothing against the benefits. I'm glad we got good benefits. I'm glad of all the things that we have. But at a certain point, we have an obligation, which should be first, to take care of the taxpaying citizens. And all this boils down to is some few, because I've had a lot of calls from the other side, and police and fire who don't agree with what was in the paper. I've been told, and that's why it bothers me that when I found out, you know, the voting thing in the editorial, the vote, how many people were voted for 50%? You know what I'm saying? And the beginners, they always speak out louder than the people who want to do the right thing. But, you know, we're supposed to take care of the citizens and the taxpayers. We're supposed to be accountable. We try to do the best we can. But any city you go to, I would dare to say, especially our size, they're not in nearly as good shape as we are for benefits, salaries, or anything else. Our benefit package range, and I don't have the exact figures, from approximately $21,000 up to about $26,000, depending on your pay range. So, you know, those are some pretty good benefits. And if you get in the real world, you're going to find out that you start paying your own insurance, and you're going to be amazed at what you will pay. I guess the last thing I'd like to say, I don't understand the Civil Service Board being in a hurry. You know, we got Captain Harbin, two letters, one from the Civil Service Board Attorney and one from our attorney, says there's no time limit on when I appoint an acting chief. There's nothing that says I can't appoint one for an indefinite time. Well, why don't we have some continuity? We have somebody that's been 38 years here, worked in all the departments, knows where all the problems are, knows what's good and what's bad, and what works and what doesn't work. What's the hurry on trying to appoint somebody? And I'm telling you that they're getting pressure from those special interest groups I named, not in the city of Gadsden. And each one of them's special groups, and I'm told from some people that's involved with them, who I'm friends with, that they each have a person picked out already, and that's the big rush on the whole situation. So there we go again. But I'm talking to the citizens who I represent and the council represents. We want to do the right thing, and if you don't like what's going on, you need to pay attention, speak up, call your legislators, and call the Civil Service Board. I just don't see what the rush is. Thank you.
I'll entertain your motion. We adjourn.
So moved.